Good evening and welcome to the Acton Main Selectments meeting for October 14th. It's 6 o'clock. Let's salute the flag first.
Let your allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to the Town Administrator's Weekly Update.
All right, just a short list for you as our office is swimming in taxes and absentee ballots so far. We have over 600 people that have voted absentee in Acton. So I commend my staff for all the hard work and extra hours trying to keep those going in and out as quickly as possible. And same with taxes, as you know, they're due tomorrow. First thing, I just wanted to let you know that we've got the District 2 Road Commissioner set up to the extent that he got sworn in. I had him meet with the liaison. He also met with the Deputy Sheriff covering Acton Shapley, the Fire Chief, Code Enforcement. I think that one of the last people he had to meet with was the District 1 Road Commissioner. I'm not sure if that's happened yet, but that was on his list. And I went for a pre-screen drug testing. It was done today. The former Road Commissioner's spouse did come in today and gave me the last of the keys and radios and so forth, so we'll start getting that swapped over next couple of days. Remember, we scheduled the meet and greet for tomorrow. I did put the post after your approval that I'm hoping to have it set up similar to how you are here with the addition of one more person. Assuming all three of you, you know, are coming, it's not necessary, but it would be nice. And add him up there. And we'll have a single file line because we still have to keep the COVID and all that in mind. So we're not going to put refreshments or anything out. You know, less clutching is better. And we've kind of advertised that if you have anything more than a couple of minutes, then we put his cellphone and his email out there. So, but that's scheduled for tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. We've finally figured out what's going on with the generator. It is good until I tell you what it was. So apparently, and I look at David because he's been the one that's been helping me kind of deal with it, the test has been set to every other week. So those off weeks, I kept telling you it's not running. It's because apparently he was set to test every other week, which isn't how I remember that happening.
I didn't think so either.
So anyways, it's back to one week. Cheryl's got a long set for 10, 11 o'clock on Wednesdays. Knockin' wood, so far it's running. So. Pandemic policy I'm going to put off for next week. We've got a couple of changes that have come up. Just a reminder that the RFP for the loan fire truck, RFP for the loan for the fire truck is out until the 28th. That's when you approved last week. The treasurer has sent it out to surrounding banks and we're advertising it as we, as we normally would. Two things that came in from Saco River, just to be aware of. The first one is that they've received an application, I think this is in your packet, from Michaela Wieland at Zero Raccoon Road. It says map 103 lot 26 for a garage, so they want you to review that application. And actually, they sent two different, one notice and then a different envelope, a notice of intent, so it's actually the same one. So that's just FYI and it's posted in the hallway. Been dealing with Attorney Malorn in regards to the deeds. I'm not sure if I told you this, but we know that the deeds were inadvertently filed from the Martell Estates giving us that land. Even though it's not a legal deed because we didn't accept it, we do have to sign deeds to give it back or to at least have a paper trail in the record at the registry. So those will be signed by you guys. The board is, not the board, the attorney is reviewing it before he okay's, you know, your signature. So that should be coming next week and that piece will be done. The individual that has done the tree lighting the last X amount of years has decided for personal reasons not to do it this year. So was hoping to reach out to the rec committee. I know we just awarded, we just added a new rec committee member and she's anxious to do some things. Don't know if maybe between them and Mary Grant, what they do in the pumpkin carving, maybe we can come up with some, you know, COVID-safe process to still do something for the tree lighting. So we'll reach out to them. Who's the rec liaison? All right. So we'll see. Ken will send some emails and see, see you in them.
Okay, thank you.
And the last thing is more just, I mean, not really town-related, but you know, we do do it on town time as well with your permission. So I'd like to update you. As you know, we've been fundraising for the Richards, Dee and Randy Richards. We wrapped that up on Saturday and raised over $20,000.
Wow.
So that was a huge success. The sad piece of that is we went from the Richards to the Robishoes. You may know the Robishoes, they live over on H Road. Their son is Cal, right? He works.
Cal Ball.
Cal is on the fire department. Jana was on the rec for many, many years. She ran it. And I know that they were, she would be the aunt of the deceased baby that we had, right? So families had a lot of, a lot of things going on, but he's got stage four brain cancer and is out of work. So we're asking everybody to round up for the Robishoes the next few weeks and see what we can do to support them in any way. That's all I have for tonight.
I know we all sign the warrants and bills.
Yep.
So I guess I need an approval of the agenda.
Make a motion when we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor. All opposed.
Minutes are not ready. You too, the holiday.
Yep. So we're going to skip the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have any department heads or committee chair updates?
If I'm aware.
Okay. Old business. A citizens petition.
Just an update on that. I did send, I said, sent an email to the individual that circulated it and let him know that you guys took a vote to put it on the next open town meeting. I didn't hear back, but I did send that out. I also sent me municipal an email regarding the question of, you know, who decides if a signature is stale, you know, how does COVID play into that? And if the board has voted to put it in the next, the next open town meeting, can a notary still be called? So as of now, I don't have a, an answer, but I just want to let you know that was done.
Okay. B, abatement?
So last week, we tabled a couple of the abatements because you had the very good question of if you're removing a building, why does the land value change? And you have an email in your packet from Dennis that says, "The value difference is due to the removal of the site improvements from the land value." We've had an improved property and we add value to the well set and driveway and landscaping to be done. This is done by adding a value to the land for site improvements. Once the buildings are removed, we also remove value that may have been tied in for site improvements to the land. Two of the properties had buildings with improvements. The other parcels were just a more lot, no site improvements. Please let me know if there's any questions. So that's why the land value changed for your assessor.
So do we have to make a?
It's your turn.
It's my turn to make a motion?
No. Is that where we're, under old business, do it that way?
I don't, you know, yeah, as I say, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Sure. Okay. These are the two, like Jennifer said, from last week. So Mattel Estates, Mattel Estates on the lake, the land value went from 48, 48,250 to 30,250. Building value was wiped off because the building was taken down. So we, the Acton Board of Assessors have approved a tax abatement for $113,747 in value and $1,370.65 in tax dollars on real estate. That is on that one. The next one is, well, it's a separate person, but I guess we can probably do it, same situation. Sandra J. Mattel, 47,750 on land, 29,750 is what it dropped to. And the same type of thing. So it was adjusted. We, the Acton Board of Assessors have approved a tax abatement for $67,659 in value and $815.29 in tax dollars of real estate. So I'll make a motion. We approve the two abatements. One for Estates, for Mattel Estates on the lake, and the other one for Sandra J. Mattel.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All approve. All opposed. Okay. All right. I'm going to move on to new business. A Doyle mooring request.
For Mr. and Mrs. Doyle. Come on up.
This is Brooke Doyle in my life. I'm Frank Calmey, but you can call me Frank Doyle.
Sorry, stop it.
I get a call all the time. This is in regards to Wilson Lake.
Can you try to talk on the mic a little bit just to make sure we get picked up?
This is about the issues that Wilson Lake would have. This is some of the law.
The common lot.
Common?
The issue on the common lot that we had a couple of years ago, just regards to that.
The common lot.
The common lot.
Oh, you talked about the right of way?
Yes.
Yes.
We're one down from the right of way. And with that, everybody uses the right of way to take out their boat. Lately, there's been three boats in that area and all of a sudden they decided to move them so they could have a beach. The right of way is 50 feet. The ramp takes up 15 feet and the rest they're using as a beach. People that don't have waterfront property, okay? So with that, there are bigger boats, more in front of our property. We're lot 22. We have 50 feet of waterfront property. The next one's 21, which abuts the right of way. And he's basically, he has to go to a minefield to get his boat out and in. And what they did is took their boats, they're under 100 feet of state mandate for mooring. That close to shore. They're too close to the shore. They're in front of our property. We can't get to the raft without going through. The footage is like 90 feet between boats. One mooring, the end of their prop. They got their props up all the time. People are going to get hurt. They refuse to move their boats. They don't want to move their boats because they can walk out, unhook from the mooring, bring it in, then go out and enjoy themselves. And the issues we have, they're obstructing us from getting in. They're obstructing us from getting out. They do not own waterfront property. And the state mandates, you have 50-foot waterfront property, you're allowed one morning. These people live up and back, and I'm not saying anything about the backwaters or anything else because they're all here to enjoy ourselves. But they flatter, flatter refuse to move further up. And our mandate is, if we can get the town of Acton to implement a mooring, an ordinance.
And the board, so that, as you guys are aware, the, because I sat down and met with them, the board has heard from other property owners in the past with similar issues, not necessarily in this area. And Inland Fisheries, the deputy warden, and Code Enforcement have all said the same thing, that without some sort of ordinance in place, they can't enforce it. And there's, there's no question that they don't have the rights to have the boats there, but they don't have any authority unless the town has a local ordinance. So.
Well, I think we, we just, this is the same thing we were discussing last time.
Is it the same area?
I think so.
Is this on the, the little inlet where the public boat launches?
We have one on our road, yes. And this is the one over the other side.
And it's when you come off.
Where my father.
Peacock.
I was going to say.
Okay. Okay. Is it beside an A-frame?
Yes.
Yes.
Hall's property?
Yes. Who?
Hall?
It's not Hall's anymore.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, he, when he comes, he comes up in the morning, he has his children there.
Yep.
And he says, "I had realized I had a marina."
Hmm.
And that's how bad it is.
Yeah, that's all shallow.
It's shallow.
Shallow water over there.
And there has been some incidences that they could have been, the children could have been hurt, that the, that the, that the moment is out.
So what are the, is it the people on the front are letting them use the property?
No.
No, they're just, they're just simply going out and putting the mooring in and.
They're just taking it. They're dropping moorings wherever they want.
How many moorings they have?
I'm sorry?
How many moorings do they have?
There's four of them right now, but.
You have four boats in that pool.
Yeah. And we know that there's more coming because we were talking to one of the neighbors down, a little further down, and she said, "Oh, honey boy, my father is leaving this to me. Now I'm planning on having a jet ski out here next year for my kids." So it's just one right after another.
And you say they, do they have rights to the, the launch?
No. No, they, they're the backwaters. They, they, I mean, there's not even any tax on.
But does it go with their backlot? Do the backlot, are they, the people on the backlot, is that a front lot that's on the lake, is that for them to get out and use?
Well, they have a.
The right of way.
It's a right of way.
Deeded right of way.
Okay, so it is a deeded right of way. All right.
But if they mandate to the state, I, we spent a couple months looking through the state brochure. I'd like to give you everything.
That's fine. Yep.
I highlighted a lot of them, and we'll ask, we'll answer your questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's the map and also this other incident that the town in May has forced people away from their property by taking them to court. And there's a, there's a Superior Court judge, the lady ruled, the judge ruled in her favor, so the gentleman moved, moved, putting a lot in front of her property. And then he put a second mooring in front of her property. He was renting that up. So she finally took him to court and she wanted Superior Court to the rules that he doesn't own waterfront property. And that's what it's all going down to. We got 50 feet, we got one mooring, we got one boat, and we're down there. We're out. And we're not instructing anybody. And we're just two boats.
So the, so.
So they kind of moor right in front of your, your land? Okay.
So you, you talked to the state, you know, Inland Fisheries and they said they couldn't do anything for her?
Okay.
She was probably out.
Who owns that dock there? That she was? Okay. And that's your next door neighbor, I assume?
Um, that's on the other side. The A-frame is over here.
Okay.
And that's where the right of way is.
Okay.
As you can see, this one here, this boat here, this is where the A-frame is. And he can't back out. And he's supposed to be able to have clear passage.
Go ahead, sorry. Just, we were getting two different conversations.
Sorry.
Well, I was going to say that when, when this issue came up a while ago, a couple of years ago, that was probably two and a half years ago. So my concern, I was Road Commissioner at the time, I just happened to skip around the meeting and I was giving my point of view on it. And the concern that I had when it all came up was that, you know, that state-owned water. And that for Inland Fisheries or the warden, you talked to a warden or Inland Fisheries?
A fishing game officer.
Okay. I would suggest you go to their higher-ups because that's state water. And if they have a mandate saying 50 feet, one mooring, then that can be enforced. But.
But we have nobody here.
Inland Fisheries would enforce that.
Yeah, and.
I talked to the court enforcement officer and he said, "You hear me saying, don't worry me." And that's why we're here tonight.
But Inland Fisheries, not the warden.
Didn't they say, didn't they say?
They, they're the ones, David, maybe I can, maybe I can get through a conference call with them. They're the ones that told us that even though they are their waters, because what you were saying is completely accurate, that it's, it's up to the local officials to enforce.
Enforce, right.
And they won't, and so from a local level, they won't do without an ordinance. But that, they have told us.
It could be something as simple as, as an ordinance limiting moorings to property owners.
Right.
Really? I mean, it could be something very simple, I would think.
Well, I mean, honestly, I kind of thought that's what it was anyways, because like they're saying, you have 50 feet, one mooring. And if, you know, I mean, if you have right of way to that lot, which they all do, means theoretically each one of those backlots would have a mooring, correct?
No, probably only one, only one.
Only one for that one, for that one. Okay, that would make sense.
Yep.
There goes a detail about that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they call it A-frame, right of way.
Whose dock is this?
Uh, that's, I think that's ours.
That's your dock?
The two of those right there.
And those two boats right there are not yours?
And they're moored.
Those are the backwaters. Those are the ones that.
Then your raft, your raft is beyond that. They're in between your land and your raft. They're mooring. I see that.
And if we, if we get in our boat, we can't go back.
The A-frame is 50 feet. We're 50 feet. And the way they set their boats up, they get, there's 20-foot boats, but with the swing, they got 40 feet. And they got 10 feet between. So that leaves us 50. We're not square with the A-frame, so we're down to 2 and 1/2 feet. It's not good. And it's getting worse.
So what are you proposing?
We would like the town of Acton to implement a mooring ordinance. You could have what they call the harbor map, but even though it's on the lake, that's a pretty urgent ground. If he can come down, he can set up the moorings. He can set up a mooring field. And the state mandates between 100 and 200 feet, they can put their boats there. But they flatter refuse to move their boats. Go, go both the shore.
So we had talked about that ordinances have to be voted on by the, by the townspeople.
By the townspeople.
Yep. So the next, so at this point, the next town meeting isn't scheduled until June.
Right.
But I think that, I mean, we take the time to review the packet and give it some consideration.
Yeah, I'd like to.
I, myself, we, I mean, we just had a petition come in here to put something forward to town meeting.
Right.
And I don't want to make this any more difficult for you guys, but I think it would hold more water if you guys did a similar thing, you know.
Similar with?
No, 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 no.
Similar, similar.
Similar. It's this thing here.
It's the stolen backwater.
Yeah. So what I said was, we just had a petition brought to us to put something towards town meeting to vote on, okay? And I think it would be good to continue, when people want to do that, to have them do the same thing. You know, what this individual did was a petition, okay? And for what you, what you're looking to have done. That way there, it kind of gives us more, you know, we, we don't want to go into something that there's no support for, you know?
There's support.
I'm sure there is. I'm, I'm not arguing that at all. I just, I just think that my, what I've always worried about was, you know, say one person comes in, made a complaint, we want to change an ordinance, and, you know, you want to see a following, you know? And I would suggest, I mean, I'm, I'm definitely, I would consider doing what you're doing. I just, I think a petition would be a good idea.
The citizens petition.
Do they, the citizens petition, do they come and get the paperwork from you, John?
There's no paperwork, but you're not concerned. We can talk about it. If you let me get through taxes this week, reach out to me sometime, one day next week, give me a call. We'll set up an appointment and I'll walk you through what exactly they're talking about and what it would look like. And we can go from there.
I think, I think what that does is it will also bring up, you know, more input of what's going on. And we'll get a better feeling of what we can do, because we don't want to put, put a warrant out there that, I mean, an article out there on the warrant that's going to, you know, some people would be for and some people are going to be against. We want to get most people, you can, you vote for it. And.
If you go with the mooring ordinance, the state allows a fee to be collected by the town. And it's a $25 fee.
And that would be in the ordinance.
So with that, you could hire somebody part-time for the summer because you get.
Well, that's, that's the other reason why I would rather see a petition for a simple reason is if we're going to start having to spend extra taxpayers' money to, to police this, then I want to see that there's enough people out there that want this before I put that on there.
We also spoke to the president of the Lake Association.
Yep.
And she's been inundated with complaints.
Yep. And so it should make it very easy for the petition.
Yeah, so this should be easy to get your signatures.
If she can't put her own, so that's not, that's not her mandate, the president of the association. She just can take a list of the people and, and put a letter up. And that's her, that's how she can go.
And this is actually good timing for you because when we sit down next week and talk about how petitions work and some of the different legal ways that you can get petitions, you do have a November election coming up where you're legally allowed to collect signatures there if it's something you choose to do. So give me a call next week. Let me get through taxes. And then we'll sit down next week and go over it.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Listen to us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
All right. You did a good job.
You can stay or, or leave. It's your choice.
I have to get my stuff.
Oh.
I think we're going to skip B.
Yeah, Mr. Maurer is not here.
I don't see.
He'd ask to be put on the agenda and I don't see him. So we'll skip that.
Okay. So we'll go to C. We'll open the truck bids.
Yep. You guys okay with me just doing it from here?
Yep, that's fine.
Cheryl, you want to write down some numbers so we can remind them to, read them out loud?
What bid you get?
I think we have one, two, three, four, five, six.
Wow.
So this was for the truck. The minimum bid was 5,000. All right, the first one, Streeter and Son, $5,600. Dalton Richardson, $6,275. Acton Escavators, $5,370. I thought it was from O'Reilly's. Wait a minute. Oh. Sean McLeod, $8,666.66. Oh, people, sorry for the scrap paper. Apple Valley, Ken Smith, $7,800. Isaiah Knox, $6,876.52. So I, so we have, so definitely the $8,666.66 is the highest, right, Cheryl?
Yeah.
So we had 56, no, 5370, I'll give you the best. So 5370 in order. We had 5,600. We have 6275 next. 687652. 7,800. And Mr. Sean McLeod for $8,666.66. What are your wishes?
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we approve, we, we go with Sean McLeod's bid at $8,666.66.
I'll second that.
Way too many sixes in that, but okay.
Assuming that the bill of sale can be signed and payment received within five business days?
Yep.
Sounds good. All right.
I second that.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor. All opposed. All right.
I'll be in touch if that doesn't work.
The truck sold. All right. We're going to do, we're going to do public comments before. We're going to do, are we going to do public comments before we go into executive session? Is that all right with you guys? I know you have to go somewhere.
It's fine.
So, do we have any public comments before we go into executive session? Hey Dennis.
Good evening, Jeff, Dennis Wong. I spoke a few weeks ago about disrespect that was towards people that came up to the microphone. Last week was a perfect example of what I'm talking about. But I do have to compliment the chair for her trying to keep order. I know it's very hard to do, but it was very concerning, to me anyway, what was said to the person that had the petition last week, Jeff Donnie, I thought that was, got out of control, he got pushed pretty hard, where he lost his temper. But.
Now it's his fault?
I would, excuse me, I'm talking to the chair. And that's my point, you know, normal procedures running a meeting is when you get up and talk, that's who you do address is the chair.
Right.
And everything goes through the chair. That's just normal procedures for any board. So anyway, I appreciate you trying to do what you tried to do, Kim, and I don't know if there needs to be a boardmanship workshop that you need to hold, or something to make the board look a little more professional, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is just what I'm talking about.
Every week Dennis, every week.
It did get out, it did get out of control, it did get out of control last week, and I, you know.
And I don't get up and say something every week. See, this is once again, Mr. Winchell lying.
Yep.
Not misrepresenting stuff.
Yep.
Really not normally talking about most time in your business.
Yep, yep.
But that's the way it is.
Thank you Dennis.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I thought you had, my last email, sorry, real quick, I'm sorry, I had you on the 21st, the last email that I got, but we'll sneak in, I'm going to sneak in tonight.
Sorry.
That's all right, let me just, we're going to, as soon as we come out of the executive session, we'll go to you. Okay, good. She's not public comment, she's not.
Sorry. Michael Walsh, by Grand River, and I'm bringing up an issue about the D-6. It originally was brought to the town selectman's meeting for a few minutes on December 4th, 2018.
Can I ask you just to start over, because I'm trying to take notes with her, and I didn't hear what you said, you're bringing up the?
He's bringing up the town D-6.
Oh, okay, I just didn't hear it.
It was brought up originally on 12/4/2018, in which Mr. Walsh brought it up, and it's, to go over quickly, I'm not going to read all of it, minutes, but I'm bringing it down possibly to the.
Fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds, yeah.
Fairgrounds, yeah.
Then it was brought up on 7/17, 7/24, 7/31, 8/7, and 8/14, at which time you tabled it. That was fourteen months from today. I guess my question is, is what's the status? Is the town, what's the town planning on doing with it? Are we going to bring it back to the town, is it going to go to the?
I thought we had, we had wanted to take it to the, to the fairgrounds.
I'd still like to get it down to the fairgrounds and make a display out of it.
Since it was, was mentioned.
We just don't have a fair this year.
Yeah.
Last year, we didn't have enough time to get it undercover and stuff.
Yeah, we probably ought to think about for a town meeting to see about, finding out what it would cost to build a, you know, just, just a roof, basically, with some removable sides, is my thought, and get it down there.
Oh, you should have looked at bid.
So, huh?
Looked at bid.
No, we don't want to get rid of it.
The value of it right now, according to my little bit of research, I'm not an expert, but with just, with just a Dozer blade on it, it's between forty-five and eight thousand.
Maybe, yeah.
And you get the B.
Yeah, yeah.
The double wings, and the winch is going to bring it up more.
Yeah.
The winch.
It's more of, it's more of a special.
Little winch, the winch was in the fire when, when they shed the car.
That was my information.
Yeah, it's more of a special interest piece, I think, to the town, you know, it's the only piece of plowing history that we have.
Right.
It'd be nice to see it.
I remember watching it, sixty-nine and seventy, when Bob Me was on it for weeks.
Yeah, and I think it would be a perfect addition, I actually talked to the people at the fair, and they thought that that would be a.
Was talking about putting it down there, I mean.
Yeah, they thought it'd be a good idea, we just need to have a cover to put over it.
We have a cover to put over it.
Huh?
We have a cover to put over it.
No, like a building.
No, I mean a roof.
Roof over it.
But we, we talked about moving it out of where it is now, which I want to let everybody know, because it's funny how this just comes up, that back there in prior select, selectmen up here, wrote up a contract with my father to do a free storage lease, so if anybody wanted to go see it, they could.
Yeah.
And who know, same individual that helped do the contract has a problem where it is, so.
Let's not, let's not even go there, that's not, no.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure you were sitting at home thinking about the town D-6, so what I, what I propose is, right now, we can get it undercover for the meantime, other than where it is right now.
Put it back in the town shed?
Put it back in the town shed.
Is the town shed leaking though? Isn't, wasn't that one of the reasons?
Probably is not enough to.
Well, that was just one of the reasons, you know, a few years ago when it was brought up, so that's, you know.
So myself, I have spoken to my father about it, because certain individuals seem to think it's a big deal, so I would like to make it not a big deal anymore, and as soon as we can get it fired up, which it needs some fuel filters, which I will go purchase, I'm at Caterpillar usually once a week, I would like to get rid of this problem, so we can go sit somewhere else for a while, then they, we don't have to worry about it.
It'll be a good idea.
Yep.
It was not any individual talking to me, I am going through all the select meeting for other reasons, it's probably catching my eye.
Okay.
I just want you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we can start working on the fairground thing now, whether it's.
Yeah.
You know, to start getting something built.
Yep.
So it'll be ready for next year.
Quick.
All right, all right, so I need a motion.
Was that it?
No other public comment?
Any other public comment? Sorry. Okay, so.
I make a motion, we go into executive session, personnel issue, 405, 6A dash one, at 6:44.
Just a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed?
They left their pictures here.
Long way down.
I don't think it's, it's on, it's on, it's on, it's on, it's on.
I'm sure it's there.
I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it.
I'm afraid we can use it, we can back, I can back all times in spring, my wife's on the lawn.
I gave you all night, I did that on your own time, not that one time.
I had to pull one line.
I didn't, I didn't want to.
Well, you don't want to get your hands on it.
I gave you a can of lops.
The sad is the media anyway.
I'd like to see what happens.
Do you know the money, the money that that guy dropped, probably paid for a building down there for the D-6? What? Is that money that that guy dropped, probably paid for a building down there for the D-6?
I know it's, I know it's, I'll just put down that money for you, I probably can be pretty good on my own next, probably.
I said before that I saw the long room, I don't need that, but, well, I don't need the deans or anything, but.
I don't think I have any very perception of it.
I don't know, to see what they're going to do with you, maybe.
My what? I would hope so, it's a bit of my soul, though.
Right, well, I'm in the springtime, I'm working myself, so, so, what are we supposed to do with it?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Now, this new guy, you know, Paul's saying, you guys are going to do it, but you don't know yet, you gotta, you gotta.
Okay.
So you gotta do it.
Always, please, I don't know what you're talking about, we, then, I don't know.
No, they're going to deliver it, you guys are all, I don't know.
I got what you think.
You ready to solve, get to me, so?
No, I'm waiting on the, the day.
For the salt?
Yeah.
You ain't getting it for salt yet?
I don't know, I don't know.
Of course they do. Of course they'll be salt, I'm already.
I don't know.
See, your head, like, it's time to receive it, but boy, it's not like me, though.
Well, it is, you still got something on you.
Time you know my head, you only have three years.
But you can't put up two weeks, so, you know, you say, no, the man is salt.
You don't need no weather.
No, no, we didn't, the only thing I know is we did wash it, so they're even hoover and go like the, the, where you want the sand, if we're not good, I can't, where you want for the sand, I don't want to do it.
You're right, yeah, yeah.
I said, hold on, honey, I'm there, we're, yeah.
I don't even think all of my hair out.
They never used to use it a lot. No.
No, no, I guess, I guess I stacked it up to the ceiling, and I was in the, I guess I don't, I don't.
Yeah, no, they never used to use it, a lot of salt.
I guess, I guess I like to bring out the machine, I always said, if you put five thousand gallons of sand, I wish you could all just skip, yeah, I understand.
Well, maybe I'm one of those, but they have to, they have to.
A what?
Bolt, that's why they did it, they used, they used, they just keep pushing it out. And the old sand shed, the way that was designed, was you were supposed to use a belt, and take the top one, and put it in one time.
Or you just go ahead and push it up?
No, you just do it right in the middle, and then they had a line all the way around in the concrete, this is how fully you can fill it, and you get that, and you have to pull five thousand gallons, do it there.
No.
They hold it, if you, if you did it that way, that was.
I don't, I wouldn't say anything about it.
That was a design mistake, but, and a lot of towns walked that to the lines, and it's when they first started putting those stuff inside buildings, and the town acted, they knew it was sudden, they got a grant, that building cost fifty thousand dollars, and we did that, we did all the grant process, and we got our money back from the state, and we put that there, we could pour things on the ground.
Fifty thousand dollars, pretty good, like that.
Didn't cost us a penny in the end, the only trouble is, the selectmen at the time wouldn't listen to the road commissioners, and said, that was an old stump, no? So you have to go down at least fifteen feet to get rid of your soil, and they didn't.
Share part of sand.
And that's why it has that, was people like me, for many years, you know, when I was outside, you get those big chunks, you know, they used to just spray it with calcium, and those big chunks, what are you going to do with them? Push mountains to the swamp, push mountains to the swamp, you know what I mean? So that's how that area got so big, that was just some sand that was frozen, we couldn't use it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, it's nice building, I just, I just, I wish it would back, because the problem is, like, you're all, you're all down, it's almost.
Oh, scoop it away, yeah.
I mean, if we need.
That was, that was a period, by the road commissioners who makes the money.
If we could push it out, that would mean, there was like, happening in the creek, I don't know, I don't know that far.
Not much, but.
That would mean, you're sitting up, the roads, you grab them, that.
You know the cement pad that, next door, maybe that, I think powder that's on town for.
That's okay.
On this?
Thank you.
I think so.
It was being drove, it was like, if it wasn't too bad, it's like, like, you know, you pull in, two trucks, you pull at the same time, if I hold on, sand one or two turns, and then we're, we're back, we turn, and you kind of walk, you kind of, you know, that's why you got, you know, that's why you can pull them out, you know, that's, yeah. No, this one, this.
No, but yeah, I mean, it is what it is, but it's going to be stopped with an hour or less, and.
So far, so.
And the other thing is too, well, you know, like I said in my last thing last week, you know, I was talking about, you know, for ten years, just about ten years, there's been the conversation about changing over to the wet system, and you'd save thirty percent of your salt, even if you use straight salt, you'd save thirty percent of your salt, and in a sense, and that's what I mean about the conversation, and I said last week, we were just having a conversation, yeah, they adjusted the standard so that it was worth the wire, to put this, 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 this mess for two bucks an hour.
That's my file, what's left on the agenda?
So that you. Oh, in that office.
So we need a motion to come out of executive session?
I will make a motion, we come out of executive session, personnel issue, 405, 6A dash one, at 6:54.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed, all right, and a decision has been reached?
I'm going to make a motion that we raise the town administrator's assistance hourly rate from fifteen to sixteen dollars an hour.
From fifteen to sixteen dollars an hour?
I'll second it.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed, alrighty.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Cheryl.
Yep, thank you, and I've, I've got to run.
Okay.
I've got another, another meeting, I got to head for Zoom on.
Okay, have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Madam Chair, with your permission, we have a, and a little bit of miscommunication, but we're human, so we, that's okay, so I apologize for making you wait, but she is from York County Soil and Water, and we had our weeks mixed up on when she was going to come and speak with you, so if you don't mind allowing her a few minutes?
Sounds good.
Thank you, sorry, I.
No, no, it's okay.
Didn't see your email. So I think this has been brought before you guys before, but the district has recently been awarded a grant to help protect the watershed of Square Pond, and so one of the things that we're hoping to do through this grant is address some sites on town roads in Acton, and we are looking to see if the town will support our efforts with this, and generally, like, the grant provides a sixty, forty cost share, so the grant would be able to provide the funds for engineering and materials. And generally, like, the grant provides a sixty-forty cost share, so the grant would be able to provide the funds for engineering and materials, and we would, are looking for the town support to help do the actual install of these things. The specific sites, and I have them here, I think they've been sent to you before, but I have another copy.
Yeah, it's been a while. They did have a representative come out.
It's been a few years, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so my predecessors started this.
Yes.
And then the grant has actually been awarded, or it has been conditionally awarded. It will officially start up in 2021 and run through 2022. It's a two-year grant through the DEP and the EPA.
Great, thank you.
So for the town of Acton, there are other sites, we're looking for the grant, but I'll focus on the Acton ones for you guys. There are five sites, four on Willow Street and one on H Road, most of which deal with undersized culverts, and looking to replace those and resize them and improve them. There's ditch work involved as well. And yeah, there's a slightly more in-depth description here, which also kind of lays out what we anticipate the costs to be, just initially. Yeah, and I think this had been brought to you guys before, but you were unable to vote on it due to the pandemic timing in the spring. So basically, I just wanted to check back in to see if this is something the town is willing and financially able to support these sites.
I think probably what the best thing to do is, I mean, H Road and Willow, those are both your roads, right, Will? I'm looking at the total cost. I don't know who made up those numbers, but it must be somewhere close, I guess. He gets an amount so much a year. If these were something that you could fit in your budget and you can work with these, he would, I'm for it, obviously. You know, I think you would wanna work with our road commissioner there and try to figure out the project themselves, what he thinks it's gonna cost, and whether or not this is something that, you know, he wants to do, then he can come to us. And, you know, because I'm all for it, and he can run it through his budget. Obviously, if it was a big, big project, where it was gonna go outside his budget, then that's when we would get involved. But right now, he does have a budget that could cover most of these.
Okay.
At this time, I don't know what he's spending his budget on, you don't have to let him know.
What timeframe did you say, so this, when, what timeframe would you want the work done, so we can think budgetary numbers?
Yeah, it could be split between 2021 and 2022.
Okay, so that gives him some time.
Yeah, there are two years, and yeah, we have the rest of this year as well to, you know, work on planning and-
Do you have a business card with you that we can, we'll leave with, this is Will Langley, you wanna come up for a minute, Will? Will is our District One Road Commissioner on that side of town.
This looks like all of his side.
So I've given him that, and he can look at it. If you give him your card, then you guys can discuss it like David said, together, and then Will can come back and report back to us, and, but it sounds like you'd have selectmen support, but we certainly need his support.
Right.
For his roads.
You don't wanna spend his money for them.
Right. But if he can, you know, save some money, that would be good.
It's not, I mean, for eighteen thousand, the grant is sixty percent.
Yeah.
I added up, his portion would only be eighteen thousand, so.
Yeah, it's about eighteen thousand, six hundred total.
Nice.
Well, thank you for coming in and talking with us.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
No, that's okay.
No problem.
Communicate directly with Will, and he'll come to us and let us know what we need to do.
All right. Article forty-three, oh, wait a minute, open sand beds, sorry.
Some reason I brought my problem tax folder out. I don't want that, Cheryl. We got one sanded. One, thank you.
Just one.
I did have, asked Cheryl to pull the nineteen numbers, because I thought it was odd that we only got one, but. So last year, it was awarded to Landscapers Depot at nine dollars and forty-five cents. And Landscapers Depot is the one company that bid this year. Assistant can attest that we ran it in a smart shot, not smart shot, we ran in the Waterbury Reporter, put it online, cable, Facebook, everywhere. We also mailed it to Alan White, Mike Carroll, Monarch, Quick Creek, Landscapers Depot, Peppin, David Sand and Gravel. We reviewed the list with the road commissioner to see if he had any additions, so this is what we got back. Last year was nine forty-five, this year has gone up to ten dollars and five cents.
And that's the only one we get in? This is who, this is who we used last year?
This is we used last year, yep. Any comments?
Yeah, Will.
I did let the other road commissioner know that you normally don't make a decision the first night, and he'd have a chance to look at it.
Yep.
But that was before I knew I was only getting one.
But are you gonna have, uh, look at that, or?
Yeah, I was, I mean, I would like to, I think at a courtesy, that's the right thing to do, but did you have any concerns with them last year?
No, Tom, it gave us a talk, we needed the material, and we needed more, and one time he said, call him and he'll give it to us, so.
And what do we think about the fifty, what, a sixty cents increase? Is that just cost of living?
Going rate for screen, sand's between ten and twelve dollars a yard, so.
Last year, Monarch was at ten, and Carroll was at eleven eighty-eight, so it's still, you know what I mean, as low as the second lowest.
That's what most people buy it for when they go pick it up. So you're getting it delivered for less than what you normally buy it picked up, so it's still a good deal. As long as they're fine with the material.
Yeah, there's, it's, it's sand, so.
Let me have him just take a peek at it for a courtesy, and then we'll put it on the agenda to approve this one, assuming there's no questions. Sound good?
You guys mailed it off to-
We have a list here of everyone that it was mailed to. We always keep our paper trail, Cheryl mailed them out herself. And I know it ran the smart, the, I keep saying that. The Waterbury Reporter, because when they bill us, they cut it out and send us, send us the, you know, where it ran and attach it. So it definitely ran, I have no concerns about the process.
I, I think when I heard there was only one, you know, when I come to a conclusion, because, you know, I work with all these companies that, problem is, it's so busy right now, I think probably what it is, is they probably, not that they didn't want to, but they probably just didn't have the time, so.
But he's busy.
Yeah, till next week.
Next week. Thanks, Will. All right, so we're on out. Article forty-three.
Yep, so this is just an FYI, no action needed tonight. This is an application that came in from Hawth Road. It is a new application, it's following a new procedure. It was an invoice in there, it was less than two thousand dollars when I looked at it briefly. Seventeen forty-four. I did send it to the road committee, the road committee chair did reach out to me to schedule a meeting date. I haven't had a chance to go back to her, but she was here. That date will work, but I'll send her an email. So we'll let them have their meeting, make the recommendation, and I'll put it on the agenda following after that. I feel like the email was, the date was the twenty-fourth, but don't quote me.
Yeah, they did give me a call, that road did give me a call, asking some questions, this and that, and I believe he should be all set.
Yep, so we just have to go through the process and make sure that, I'll find Melissa's email real quick. Oh, here we go. October twenty-sixth at six o'clock, they'd like to meet, and that's a Monday night, and so that will be fine. So we'll give them the okay, and then it'll be on your agenda for the Wednesday after.
Okay.
It okay?
Sounds good. All right. Do we have any announcements? Any announcements?
We'll get the meet and greet.
Pumpkin Carving's coming up, they're doing the drive-through.
Meet and greet.
At the school?
Uh, meet and greet, uh, no, at the Mary Grant.
Oh, okay.
I know they put some flyers out there, so you can check the, the meet and greet tomorrow, we talked about.
Meet and greet.
Taxes.
Time is up again.
Which one?
Greet.
Huh?
Meet and greet.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
I can't think of anything else. I'm sure there's plenty, but.
Anybody else? Well, then I guess we'll, uh.
Michael Marshall, you joining the meeting?
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Have a good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming.